And I call the October 2nd meeting to order. I will start with an invocation, so if you'll join me in the prayer. Dear God, thank you for our beautiful community and county. Be with our first responders as they seek to protect us in our times of need. Help us today as we try to make decisions that will benefit our community and be with us in the future. Amen.
Amen.
I think the first thing on our agenda is approval of minutes. Do you entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Hey, do we have a second? All in favor? Next thing is the financial report.
Yeah, if you look at page one, we're looking at, we're two months into our fiscal year. So if we were right on budget, we'd be at seventeen percent. You go down about the middle of the first page to see total commission revenue. You see our total commission revenue so far through the first two months was sixty-six thousand five fifty-two. And so we're actually at thirty-four percent of what our total budget is. And a lot of that is due to the construction review fees. If you go down, four lines down from the top, we had budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars for construction review fees and we're already in excess of twenty-two thousand dollars in construction review fees. So that's really driving our revenue over budget at this point. And if you turn the next page, if you go to page two and look at expenses, again seventeen percent is where we would be if we were right on budget. Drop all the way down to the bottom and see total expenditures. Total expenditures so far this year have been thirty-two thousand four ninety-five, which is fourteen percent. So we're above on revenue and below on expenditures. And the only thing to point out, I guess, on the expenditures is if you go down to line nine from the top in our computer hardware, we talked about this, I guess it was the last meeting, we're over budget there because we wound up having to buy one or two computers. I can't remember, two computers that we weren't originally budgeted to buy. So from a financial standpoint, we're nothing major to talk about.
Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it, please.
Is that a second? Thank you, all in favor? Next thing on the agenda is the construction sureties. Would you like to go over those, Makayla?
Sure. We just have one change. Shelby Green Limited, Shelby Green, Phase Two, Section Two. This project was accepted by Junction City Commission at their last city commission meeting. And so I'm proposing that we release the letter of credit in amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred eighty because the project is complete.
Okay, do we have a motion for that release or any discussion?
Second.
All in favor? Next thing on our agenda is the subdivision approvals. Danville Host is approved, has applied for subdivision approval.
Jim, I'm sorry to interrupt. This application has been postponed. We have advertisement requirements for this as part of the zone change that I did not catch two weeks prior. So we're going to postpone it and I'm going to go ahead and send out advertising as per the zone change condition and we'll hear it at the next meeting.
Do you need to have this tabled or postponed?
No, we won't table it because I'm going to have to go ahead and re-advertise anyway. The applicant has, you know, emailed me to say that they're willing to postpone, so we can go ahead and do that.
So you'll just note that in the minutes when the time comes? Okay.
Yeah.
Second one is Rebecca Gibbons, is five per subdivision, hundred thirty-seven acres. You want to present that to us, Makayla?
Yep. Rebecca Gibbons has applied for the subdivision of one hundred thirty-seven point zero six seven acres of land located at thirteen fifty-one Tank Pond Road in Parksville into four tracks. The property is zoned agricultural, A.G. You can see here the reason that it's coming before you all as a major is because it's the four tracks, which exceeds our requirement for a minor. They're showing sufficient road frontage, minimum lot size, setback requirements, et cetera. I don't have any concerns. The only thing to note is that this plat was submitted after tech review. So typically, we do require major plots to go through tech review first. So you all have the option to table this till the next October meeting. But, you know, with this being pretty minor and it meeting all our regulations, I don't have an issue with you all choosing to do preliminary and final today.
Is there any flood zone in this area?
No, I don't believe so.
No, okay. And you're just tracing along? Yep, come on up.
We've got, we've got the FEMA flood map note in the survey notes. It's, this is on top of a ridge. It's definitely not in the flood zone.
Yeah.
Could you identify yourself? Could you?
Oh, sorry, I'm Dale Shepperson with A.G.E. Engineering.
So you're just outlining, you're not changing the boundaries around the perimeter at all?
No, no, the perimeter boundaries are what they are. We're just creating four tracks out of the original, the original property were two tracks. So we're reconfiguring those lines and creating four.
Is there, do you know of an urgency that we couldn't put this back in the tech committee?
Well, yeah, this is at absolute auction and they are wanting to close within thirty days.
They've actually already been auctioned contingent upon the lots being approved.
Okay, I was wondering where we were in the process.
Yep.
Did you, did you review all the notes on it then?
Yes, yep. I've reviewed all the notes. I, I reviewed it essentially as I would a minor. And, yeah. I can't remember, I might have had one minor comment on it, but nothing that would change the layout or anything like that.
My eyesight isn't that good. These are pretty good.
Yeah, these are hard to see, obviously. I mean, you have a copy in your packet as well. But it, it's just to show you where the four tracks are. You can see that it's got sufficient road frontage for each of them. I think the smallest track is approximately eight and a half acres. So it's well beyond our minimum lot size of one point one five acres. You know, only one of the tracks has existing structures on it. I don't know where my, there it is.
There it is.
And so we don't have any, you know, we're not creating any non-conformities from this. They're showing the appropriate setbacks and we'll have to get utility sign-offs on it to make sure that it can provide water and utilities, so.
Yeah, those are the kind of things we tend to look at during the tech meeting, which you've already addressed.
Yes, I've already met with the water and electric.
Okay.
The water's a little bit of an issue at this property. Not an issue, but this, this Tank Pond Road, this is actually going up the hill. The property is. And the Parksville water has a line, a water line, serviceable water line at the bottom of the hill and at the top. However, the two are not connected. But they can service the two lower tracks from the bottom and the one upper track from the top. Of course, the one that's already has the house on it, it already has water. So, so there'll be like three new cap-ons. But they can do that, it's just that the water line is not connected, never has been, probably never will be.
Okay. So there's minimal risk or minimal concern about this going through? That's my opinion.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we give preliminary and final approval for this subdivision.
Thank you. Anybody second a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. So we'll move from, we'll move from a regular meeting to a, the public hearing portion of our meeting. First thing is an application by Jody Sharp. You want to go over it, Makayla?
Yep. So Jody Sharp has filed an application for a zoning map amendment on eighteen point one three five acres located at zero The Hump Farm Road, Boyle County, from single-family residential R1A to single-family residential R1C. So this is the property here. You can see where the existing Hump Farm and, sorry, my parcel lines are a little out of date, but you can kind of see where the existing development and phases have been built out. And then this is the actual property in the back of the Hump Farm that we're discussing today. As you can see, all of the Hump Farm right now is zoned R1A and they're looking to bring it to R1C. So that's just a different single-family residential zoning district.
Is there R1C anywhere else in the Hump Farm?
No, no. This is the entirety of the Hump Farm here and as you can see, it's all zoned R1A. It was done back in two thousand and five. Back then, it was G.R.A.
Yeah.
And so now it's, it's R1A. That's what it got brought to with our new zoning ordinance. This is the future land use map. So sorry, it's kind of tough with the parcel lines, but this is kind of the area that we're talking about here in the rear. So our future land use map is showing this as low-density residential. Our low-density residential basically says this land use designation comprises areas designated for single-family development with growth densities ranging from one dwelling per acre to five dwellings per acre. I, I brought this slide in because I, I feel that this, this request kind of is in-between low-density and moderate-density residential for the flume. I didn't ask them to go through a flume amendment because I do feel like it meets the low-density residential designation, but there's also some language within moderate-density residential that talks about the higher-density single-family detached. This is the highest-density single-family detached that we allow in our current zoning ordinance of one unit per five thousand square feet. Even if you go up in zoning designations for R2, R3, it's still, that would be the density allowed for single-family detached. So that's why I just brought that in here. So the proposed density for this new phase, the area that we're discussing today, is two point eight seven dwelling units per acre. So you can see it's well within that one to five dwellings per acre. On the existing density for the Hump Farm that's been built out as of now, it's two point three seven dwelling units per acre. So that's a twenty-one percent increase.
Do we have, do you have records or proposed densities of two point eight seven someplace else in the county?
In the county?
Yeah.
I didn't do the density for Mox Creek or some of the other subdivisions that we've got. Honestly, probably along some of the waterfront, like Waterworks Road, things like that, it's probably even higher.
Yeah.
Just because some of those lots are pretty small, but I didn't, I didn't do the math on it.
I just didn't know the feel of how big it was, but I'm sure that it had, it already exists.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it can be tough when you look at gross density, which is what the comp plan directs us to do. You can see it says with gross densities. So that includes the, the road infrastructure, it includes public right-of-way. So it doesn't give you the best understanding of what the, the change is just because the public right-of-way takes up such a significant portion of the, of the tract.
Yeah, because these numbers here don't, don't agree that the road is going to change any than what it is.
No, the public right-of-way has to be a certain standard, whether you're building R1A or R1C, et cetera. So that's kind of a fixed amount that they're going to have on it.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, this, I know this is really tough to see, but this is a conceptual plan or preliminary lot layout that the applicant submitted. So you can kind of see where the existing phases are here. And then this is what they're showing for this new phase that they're proposing, the zoning map amendment area. And they're proposing fifty-two lots as part of this conceptual plan. I put in the old conceptual plan that was submitted with the two thousand and five zoning map amendment. Of course, things kind of change as you go through. For instance, this area, where's my laser? There it is. This area here is actually a cul-de-sac now rather than a, a connected through street. So, so things kind of change a little bit. You can kind of see here how that's. But in the old conceptual plan, that was showing us forty-two lots. So that's why I did a staff estimate of ten lots added based on the two thousand and five conceptual plan versus current. The engineer's estimate based on what they could fit in with the current conditions of how this area is laid out is five lots added. I think that's probably a more accurate estimate. I just wanted to show you, you know, what we were originally looking at back in two thousand and five versus what we're looking at now. Yeah.
So the added lots that are at the very top.
Right here?
Yeah. The ones that are next to it, lots one through eight, would be adjacent to the existing one through six where the cul-de-sac is?
Me, sorry, I can't see the lot numbers from here. Let me pull out this.
Well, I know it's very hard, but basically what I'm asking is, are those houses that are currently existing on those lots?
Okay.
One through six, right above the cul-de-sac?
So right here?
Are they going to touch upon those smaller lots that are above?
They would, yeah. There wouldn't be a road that ran through there. So that would be, you know, this portion here would be zoned R1A. This whole, this kind of chunk here outside of where I did the yellow boxes roughly. And then this area and here, if the zone change was approved, would be R1C. So the R1A minimum lot size, I put a table up later, but the R1A minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. The R1C minimum lot size is five thousand square feet.
But overall, this side, it looks like there's some, something in between the existing and what would be added.
Yeah, there's, there's not a street. Yeah, this, this line here is sanitary sewer, so they're just showing some of the utilities. So there's not a street that goes through there. It, they are deeper lots than what you see for lot one through six. So here, these lots are not as deep as what you've got on this portion here. There's a slope here. Is that right, Kendall? Yeah, there's, when you drive out there, there's a slope along this portion here, so it kind of.
So that that's being added on at the very top with those houses that will be adjacent to the existing, there will be a difference in the character of those lots than what is existing?
Yeah, I mean, we would, so I'll just pull up that table real quick. So R1A, minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. R1C is five thousand square feet. The lot width is seventy feet. So right now, every lot in Hump Farm needs to at least show seventy feet of lot frontage and lot width at the build line. If you go to R1C, it would be fifty feet. So it would be a reduction of twenty feet for lot frontage and lot width. And then obviously, the, the lot area is, is smaller as well. Yep. Were there any more questions on the conceptual plan or should I kind of move on from that?
Now, this, as you just stated, this is the concept plan, conceptual plan.
Yes.
We would see it later, in a different process.
Yep. If the, if the zoning map amendment's approved or if it's not, I mean, this area is still able to be developed as a single-family residential area. So, you know, once Jody is ready to go ahead and develop this section, whether it's at the R1C or R1A, they would submit a preliminary and final plat that would come through planning commission. And that's kind of when we would look at utilities and lot layout. And it'd be more engineered. Right now, they're, they're basically just putting in what is a potential preliminary lot layout for where the roads are going to be. The roads are probably going to be, I would anticipate somewhat similar. I mean, it's pretty similar to what the original concept plan was showing, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I know this is a lot of language, but the comprehensive plan tells us to look at residential development guidelines, standards when we're looking at a residential zone change. I kind of highlighted what's important, but the first point is just for a detailed traffic impact study. I, I don't feel it's necessary for this ask. They did it back in two thousand and five at a hundred forty-five lots as the anticipated amount for the Hump Farm. And with this, with this request proposing approximately five to ten additional lots, I don't feel a traffic study is, is going to provide much additional information from what we got in two thousand and five. And it, it wouldn't be required based on how the language is written in the zoning ordinance. The second, residential development should not exceed the density of immediately adjacent developments defined as those developments contiguous to external property boundaries of the subject site by more than fifty percent. So as I already discussed, the proposal would be a twenty-one percent increase from what's existing in the current Hump Farm subdivision. The remaining adjoining property is vacant farm uses, so it's, it's kind of hard to get a density requirement on that. Obviously, it'd be a significant increase, but the way I read it is it's immediately adjacent developments rather than vacant farmland. So I think you're looking at the twenty-one percent. Residential development should have streetlights, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, et cetera. That's going to all be required as part of our subdivision regulations, so they'd be required to meet those when they bring in the plat. Residential neighborhoods should be protected from adverse impacts of proposed developments and land use changes. So the remainder of Hump Farm is zoned R1A, which requires minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet and seventy-foot lot width. R1C, minimum of five thousand square feet and fifty-foot lot width. Residential development should be discouraged on lands with greater than twelve percent slopes. I'm not aware of an area that would, that would meet that topographic challenge on this site. And then the last two are about high-density residential development, which is what we're not discussing today. So that's not applicable. Is there any questions on this? No, all right. These are the proposed conditions that the applicant submitted with the, with their request. The applicant agrees that the subject property will be developed with a density ranging from one dwelling per acre to five dwellings per acre. The applicant agrees that each dwelling will be a detached, single-family structure. The applicant agrees that each dwelling will be connected to the City of Danville Sanitary Sewer and Lake Village Water System. The applicant agrees to construct a public county road for access to dwellings. And the applicant agrees that each dwelling will include two off-street parking spaces. Let me just get my staff report here, sorry. Make sure I'm not missing anything. The one other item that I wanted to mention is that in two thousand and five, for all sixty-three point six acres of the Hump Farm, they were originally proposing approximately a hundred forty-five lots. They did not make this a condition. They wrote right on the conceptual plan that it was subject to change, but that was what they were kind of anticipating as the number of lots. So without approving the zone change, staff estimates that approximately a hundred fifty lots total could be accommodated. With the proposed zone change, it'd be somewhere around a hundred fifty-five, a hundred sixty, probably closer to a hundred fifty-five. So we're looking at about ten lots increased from what the original proposal was back in two thousand and five as a, as a whole. And five lots total if the zone change is not approved from the hundred forty-five. Does that make sense? Okay. When you're looking at a zoning map amendment, I know I go through this every time, so I apologize, but we are looking to see if it's in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan or in the absence of such finding that the original zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate or there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan. And that's all I've got. Is there any questions for me?
Well, R1C allows manufactured homes and zero-outline homes as well, right?
It does, but the applicant put a condition on it to limit it to single-family detached. So those would not be permitted if the zone change was approved.
Right.
Yep.
I have a question for Kendall and Mr. Sharp.
Okay.
On the original development, we had, started out with, come on up. We started out with sidewalks down each side of the street and I think ended up with sidewalks down one side of the street. What, what are you proposing for the R1C area? Will it still have sidewalks?
We'll, we'll continue. Wait a minute, let's back up just a second. First of all, this change is not going to change my restrictions on the size of the homes. Secondly, the lot sizes will remain between nine to fifteen thousand square feet, which is, an R1A is ten thousand square feet. What I'm requesting, more than anything else, is not a change in the integrity of the development. I want to change the side yards. I've had requests for the addition of a third garage on homes. Lots are not wide enough to permit that. With reducing the side yards from twenty feet to ten enables me to add a garage if it's requested. And essentially, that's what I'm seeking, more than anything else, out of this zone change. I'm not going to change my restrictions. I'm not going to. I'm not going, in terms of the square footage of the homes, I'm not going to change my restrictions in terms of how we develop all of that. So that, that pretty much is what I'm seeking. I have no interest in changing the size of the homes. Homes average in there between 1550 to 2,000 square feet, and I want that to continue. And that's the integrity of that development. Now, you think in terms of the number of lots. My engineers calculated five additional lots. Five additional lots is not significant in terms of the overall development of 140 to 150. And 21% sounds big. It's a statistic, and you have to remember, statistics tell stories that are not often true with that. But I, I have no interest in changing anything other than that. And the other it does permit is design efficiencies in terms of utilization of the land. And there's nothing wrong with utilizing land as it ought to be. That is a scarce commodity that will be going away.
Which year, is there any concern in your mind about fire and safety access to the back of the property when you get down to the 10-foot clearance?
Your homes will have plus or minus 20 feet between them.
Well, that assumes there's not a fence. That assumes there's not a fence between the property, but if you have a fence between there, it's a 10-foot path.
I can't do anything about fences. The attempt to govern fences is an absolute nightmare. Because you have everyone that says they are an American, and they are free to do what they wish. It is a total nightmare. And you can ask these folks.
I follow the rules.
They follow the rules. And I, it, it just got to be a, a constant battle. And there's more to life.
I'm not trying to judge fences one or the other, just as, I'm clearing about safety, fire concern to get to the back of the building in several of these lots, whether you've got what you're thinking.
If they put a fence up, access to it would be zero. If they don't put a fence up, they have access to it. That's, that's the only way I can answer that. The, my preference would be no fences, but you, you can't get by with that.
I agree that if there is an offense, it's not as much concern. People do put shrubberies and other things, but that's an issue that's just going to happen.
That, that is their piece of property. That is where their castle is located, and they are king of that castle or master of that castle, however you wish to phrase it.
But in my mind, having 20 foot seems to me, personally, that's easier to get that type of safety equipment or other equipment around the back of the building. Some of these, we're going to, the way the subdivisions are laid out, it's difficult to get around.
You know, most fires are fought from the front of the building and not the back.
We can't judge, I can't judge whether it's the right thing to do. I just understand that if there's a fire in the back of the house, that's where I'm going to get to.
We're talking about something that is existential, and there's no way to provide a positive answer to that.
You're right, it's no positive, we cannot read the future. All we can do is try to plan for events.
Right, I, I agree.
Let's finish our conversation here.
I'm sorry.
Was that, you had other comments?
You mentioned the square footage.
Oh, yeah, the, the minimum square footage is 1,500 feet. And that will remain.
What do your existing homes look like? Are they mostly 1,500? Are they mostly 2,000?
They're between 1,500 to 2,000 square feet.
I understand that, but are most of them smaller or larger? Well, the question I'm trying to get to, you mentioned 1,500 or 1,500 square feet. You can make all your homes that small if you wanted to, right? Are you new?
That, that, that is correct, but...
Do you intend to use the same mixture that you used in the other lot?
You know, 1,500 is minimal. For the most part, that works out to be a home that's between 50 to 52 feet by 30 feet deep. Well, I'm just telling you what that is. In addition, you put on a garage to that, that's an additional 200 or 400 square feet.
But my question is, you mentioned this having the same mixture of size and variety of houses as your existing.
I, I, I mentioned there would not be a change in the integrity of the development. Yeah. We, we will follow the same development footprint that presently exists. We're not, I'm not interested in going in there and changing anything.
Mr. Sharp, just to confirm a detail on that size restriction, that's in the form of a deed restriction is where that minimum size is recorded?
What?
You said you're not going to be changing the restriction on the size of the houses with a minimum of 1,500?
That'll be recorded.
Okay, is, is it already recorded or...
Yes, it, it's been recorded in each section that's been developed out there.
And will be for this one as well? Thank you.
Do we have any more questions from the audience for Mr. Sharp? We'll, we'll get to where anybody else that wants to speak for or against the zone change can speak.
I have a question, Jim.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, was there any entertainment of the idea for R1B so that there was a transition from R1A to R1C? It looks very disparate for lot 30 to lot 41 to the adjacent lots, or, sorry, I should say opposing lots. Was there any consideration that there be a section that was R1B? Because these lots look very small and just obstetrically to them across the street.
Which section are you referring to as being small? Put the...
Director, put the lot thing back, put the lots back up.
This one?
That will work. Which way? Yeah, so...
Okay.
Up towards the top, near the cul-de-sac, is lot 31 and 30. And then going down to the bottom, to the other end of the cul-de-sac, is, is lot 41. Those look disparately smaller than the, the lots that are obstetric to them across the street. Was there any concern or consideration that some part of the development would be R1B, which would have a, a wider lot front of 60 feet versus 50? Was there any consideration for that?
I, I'm not...
Maybe.
I'm kind of following what he's saying. I think that's a good point, so. My name's Kendall Wise, I work for Vantage Engineering, and we were helping Jody with surveying and engineering. The, the transition, the minimum lot size for R1B is 8,000 square feet, which is equivalent to .18 acres. Every lot that we're showing on this conceptual plan is at least, it's all, they're all larger than, than that acreage or the, the minimum, they're, they're larger than the minimum acreage that is required for R1B. I mean, as far as the transition in terms of just looking at the lots, they all meet the acreage requirement for R1B.
I, I get that, and I appreciate your response. When you look at a drawing, and you all are professionals, when you look at a drawing, you know, it's one thing. After the structures are on them, they will look incredibly disparate to the others. So I'm just concerned, and I'm asking the question, it may not have any bearing here on the, on the hearing. I'm just asking, was there any consideration for a blend of the three requirements?
We never gave any consideration for that.
Yes, sir.
That answers your question. We thought the lot size was an acceptable transition from one section to the other.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Sharp? Do you have one, or, okay?
I guess I have a question, Mr. Sharp. It appears that you have an interest in moving away from homes that are in the R1A to R1C zoning category. Why?
That statement has no basis. I have no interest in moving away from the size home that presently exists based on any type of zone. In other words, the R1A home will also be in the R1C home. There will be no change. The homes are restricted to 1,500, and for the most part, the average size home that I've been building is 1,630 to 1,650. That will remain. And the lot, the, the zoning has nothing to do with the building size.
You got a question?
I've actually got a couple.
Okay.
With what?
Sorry, could you go to the mic when you ask a question so we can get on the record? Thank you.
Identify yourself by name and address, too, please.
My name's Todd Boyd, I live at 120 Max Cabness, which is on top of the hill. My house, you can see the house with all the rocks around it. My house is just south of that, the next house south with all the dirt. With the houses that we got now in there, the sewer system, the pump houses at the beginning of the neighborhood cannot keep up with the houses we have now. The whole subdivision, as of now, smells like one big sewer pit. Are we going to upgrade the sewer system down there to sustain all these other houses?
May I respond to that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Jody, could you go to the mic, too? I'm sorry, thank you.
We're, we're trying to record this.
In the advocate, it was advertised in the most recent edition that the pump station there at Mox Creek would be upgraded, and they are taking bids for that. That pump station was defective from day one, and you're correct, it smells awful. But, and I made numerous complaints and made no headway about that. The statement to me was always, don't take it to the state.
So the one in our development is Mox Creek?
It's Mox, yeah, it's Mox Creek. And it's stated for an upgrade. And if you would like, you can get the most recent edition of the paper and see where that's been advertised for bids. And that should address the issue that you have raised. And it has been an anathema for me.
Okay, and another question is, I seen, you might as well stay here, Joe. She was reading a part, part of the restrictions, too, is there's supposed to be street lightings. Was there something in there about street lightings?
Sorry, I'm going the wrong way.
Street lighting is required in the city. Street lighting is not required in the county. It's, it's how that's been, and the county has followed the rule that if folks want street lighting, then they must either pay for it or deal with a special assessment to pay for its ongoing expense. That was the experience that I had with them when we opened this.
Okay. All right, now, as far as he was asking the question about the fire service. I'm retired, 27 and a half years in fire department. I've worked on Danville City from the time I was 13 until 1996, when I got hurt. With the layout of that property there, with, we only got one entrance and one exit out of that neighborhood. With all of these new houses, even with what we got now, we have a terrible bottleneck. It don't matter what time, day or night, trying to get in and out with one entrance. If we have a major incident in that area, we do not have enough room to get everybody out of that neighborhood. Are we ever looking at putting another entrance and exit out of that neighborhood, especially if we get all these other 150 houses in here? Or how many more are you planning on putting in there?
If you will look, you'll note that we sub-street to the Quell property to access that if there's future development in there. And that was what was required at the very beginning of this process in '05.
At the top, at the top of the image.
Yeah, I see that. But are, if we add all these houses, are we going to go on out?
Whenever it gets developed.
So... Yeah. It's actually, it's the west side of that development. Yeah. There's a lot of different trains going through here. Come up to the mic.
Come on up to the mic, please.
We're attempting to record this, so please go to the mic.
My name's Mike Jackson, I live at 112 Max Cabness. There's a railroad track that goes to the west side of the development, which would be at the top of the screen. We only have one way in and one way out of there. You all know what, nobody knows for sure what goes on them trains, but there's certainly the possibility of a wreck or some kind of accident there, some kind of who knows what. We only have that one entrance to come in and out of there. That picture that you have up there showing the houses that are there is way out of date. The last couple of years, that has exploded. Obviously, not where the yellow boxes are, but cer, well... Up to the yellow boxes, for sure, yeah, it's...
Yeah, I think that aerial image is from about a year ago.
It's continued to grow, yes.
Incredible, incredible. The first, we've been there six years, I guess. Prior to that, that, that whole development was real slow and growing. The last five years, it's, it's just, there's probably eight, 10 houses under construction right now, some for sale, some not, some foundations in. You got one way in and one way out. We got people driving through there like crazy. School buses, picking up kids, dropping off kids, families with children, pets out walking. One sidewalk, one half, one side of the street. And the traffic, the traffic and the speed that some of these people go through there is ridiculous. Something major is about to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute. We'll get to that. Go ahead.
In order to dispense with this conversation, I will withdraw this request and revert to the original zoning as it exists. And I appreciate your time.
Director, is that the right?
I'll let Henry answer that.
He controls the application, he's permitted to do that, yes. No action required by the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Sorry, inconvenience.
Thanks, Jody.
You're still under a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, we'll end the public hearing with that and move back to the regular meeting. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports.
No, we, we have to take a motion on the Center College applications. Thank you all for coming.
Senator, Senator College has asked to remove their...
They've asked to table it till the next meeting, and so we'll need to take a motion on that.
For both topics?
Yeah, for the flume amendment and both zoning map amendment requests.
So they're, they are withdrawing all of those?
They're tabling it to the next meeting. They wanted to hold a neighborhood meeting with, you know, some of the people that live out there and prior to bringing it here, so. with, you know, some of the people that live out there and prior to bringing it here, so.
Well, then I make a motion in conjunction with the request to table these two topics.
I second.
Three, sorry, three topics.
Three topics, excuse me.
Thank you.
Yes, there are three. Three topics. I make a motion that we table those.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. Any other business before we move on to the new business?
Yeah, we've got to do the goals and objectives for a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to take that?
I don't know.
I think you all have to make a motion to take it off the table from the previous meeting.
So this just brings it back to the table, if I understand what we're doing now.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion. We bring it back to the table. It was tabled.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right.
All right. I'm not going to read through all these again because we went through them in pretty extensive detail at the last meeting, but I did want to note that each of the changes that were brought up at last meeting were made. One of the biggest ones was goal two, objective A. We had some language in there about regulatory barriers that was removed. We had some comments about adding those, such as for residents to age in place, I made that change. I'm trying, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my old copy with me. I should have, but, to note each of the changes. But they have all been made. It was brought back through the comp plan committee to ensure that no additional comments were had, and I have had it on the website for the past few weeks. I haven't gotten any additional calls or comments in those last few weeks about it. So I think this is where we had wanted to see it go at the last meeting. So is there any questions for me on this? I think it is a public hearing, so we can hear from anyone in the, in the audience that wants to speak on it as well. But if there's any questions for me first, then.
I think you did a good job of capturing the modifications we talked about last time.
Yep.
They were in there.
Yep.
This is just one element of all the comprehensive plan rewrite that's going on, but it's a very important one.
Yes. The step for this will be that you all will adopt it, and then we'll bring it to each of the legislative bodies also for adoption. Each of those legislative bodies have the authority to make additional changes or amendments for their specific jurisdiction. So, you know, the hope is that we have one unified goals and objectives, but each legislative body does have the ability to do that.
Okay. And that's what I wanted to clarify a little bit, Director, is make sure we understand. By the P and Z group here adopting this, it becomes available for other groups of the organization to review and comment?
Yeah.
Or how does this work?
It doesn't have to go through another public hearing process necessarily. They can choose to hold a public hearing on it, much like any other, you know, application that we forward to them. But they have to actually adopt it. They're not required to adopt the entirety of the comprehensive plan, but they are required to adopt goals and objectives.
And those groups could also simply say, I need to have the balance of the plan before I take an action on the goals and objectives, too. They can take that route also.
I think they have to take action within 90 days of when we send it. So I think at that point, they would basically be denying it and sending it back to us for additional, yeah.
The balance of the comprehensive plan will be ready for review and adoption before the 90-day interval?
What's the date today? I think that's the goal, is to have it not adopted, but hopefully to have a draft available for comment by late January. I put a timeline in later after we get through this portion of the public hearing. But that's the goal for now. I can't promise I'm going to make that, but that is the goal. Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand the steps.
Yep.
So the future land use map rebuild, restructure that, which I know.
Just to be clear, we would not adopt the full plan until goals and objectives have been adopted by each of the legislative bodies in whatever form that the jurisdictions choose to do it. We, I would not bring the comp plan forward for full adoption by the planning commission until goals and objectives have been adopted by each of the legislative bodies. So even though we're kind of looking at that timeline, I don't anticipate bringing the full plan to you all until February or March because we'll leave it out for public comment, and there will be, you know, revisions as we go through it before we actually bring that plan to you all, so.
That will certainly give those, a lot of people, time to make comments and be comfortable with this.
Yes, absolutely.
This is a major change, what we have listed, even though many of the goals and objectives are what we have today. But the way we've rewritten them, it can be perceptions. You could have some concerns, but thank you very much. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Any more comments about goals and objectives?
I think you have to open it to the public if anyone wants to speak on it.
I thought we were still in the public hearing.
Yeah.
So I was asking if there was any more comments we.
Yeah. Yeah, just go to the mic if you don't care. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Lofton Beasley. I've never been to a planning and zoning meeting. Joe Myers invited me. I don't see him here anywhere. I'm more concerned with the affordable housing in the goals.
Let me bring that back, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, 2A there.
Yeah. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, and that's why I raised my hand. That's what, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Affordable housing options. What are we going to do about affordable housing?
Yep.
There are people that need housing bad.
Yep.
And this was on my heart right now.
Yep.
I'm with Dammel County NAACP, First Vice President, Dammel County Him Rice Commission Chair, KFTC Executive Committee. I'm a law signee.
You're busy.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Ms. Beasley, you just sat through a zone change hearing, and these goals and objectives would be something we'd consider during that. And if there was a zone change that might allow for the building of affordable housing, that would be a goal we would consider during that. So that's the way this would influence the policy process.
Yes. Are there any plans in place for building any affordable housing? Or like for housing, the Housing Authority to build more housing? Or anything like that, low-income housing?
I can't say for certain because, you know, we're kind of a separate entity from those groups. I don't currently have any plans on my desk necessarily for something like that, but that doesn't mean something's not in the works for those entities. I'm just not sure. I'm sorry, I can't give you more info on that.
Okay. Thank you all.
In case you don't know me, Sally Bright, 3456 Lexington Road. And I just want to thank you guys for this. This is really a great goals and objectives. Y'all did a wonderful job. Too bad about what happened with the people who were supposed to do it. But you really have smart growth principles in this, and it's very, very well done, and we just really appreciate what you've done. So thank you.
One of the things you witnessed this morning, when a developer brought a plat in and asked to reduce the lot size, it changes the living conditions of the people that move there. They have smaller lots, less land around them. They have problems with access with the fire and emergency vehicles if the lots are too narrow. But when you get narrower lots, they cost less, so it becomes more affordable housing. So that's one of the reasons you have goals and objectives to, because you have to balance the size of things against what you do to the layout of the land. Does anybody else have any comments for the public hearing before we close it? Not, we'll close the public hearing then and go back to the regular meeting. And the next thing on our agenda is the committee reports. Do we have an advisory committee report?
We need to take a motion on, take a vote on the goals and objectives, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, you.
Do we have them, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to adopt the goals and objectives?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? I think it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you all. I didn't have much else. I just kind of wanted to go over a quick timeline. I thought this was going to be a longer meeting with the center applications as well, so I didn't want to keep you all too long. But the goal right now is late October, early November, to have future land use map charrettes. I wish I could have brought those states to you today, but I haven't quite nailed them down. I hope to have them out on our website and have the legislative bodies push those, that information out by next week. Late January is the goal, to have a traffic comp plan available for public comment. And then, like we said, February, March for planning commission adoption. These are all subject to change as we kind of go through this process, but that's just my goal for now, and I will do my best to meet it, so.
I know, I know it gets slow in December because of the holidays.
Yep.
But it also, less days in a month to work, too.
What's that?
There's less days in a month to work also in December with the various vacations.
I'll be gone over Thanksgiving, but I'll be working pretty much off Christmas, except for the days I get off, so.
I would fully expect that late January could be a concern just by having the need to have enough time to do it, is what I'm getting into.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll just, we'll see how it goes. You know, that's just the goal for now. We'll have a few more comp plan committee meetings after the holidays. I think I worked them around so we wouldn't have them during the holidays.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, so we'll just see where we're at in late January. If we have to push it to March or April, then that's what will happen. I'm not going to rush it just to get it done, but I know everyone, including myself, is eager to have a comp plan, a new comp plan for us, so I'm going to work hard to try and, try and get it done in this timeframe, but we'll see. So the next two planning commission meetings, I'll kind of probably do some brief presentations just to kind of wet our feet on some of the other elements that we're looking at and what those chapters are going to look like, just so I'm not throwing 150 pages at you or whatever. It's going to be cold in January, so I'll just, they'll be brief, probably 15, 20 minutes, but just to kind of go over that.
And then, of course, we typically have this meeting at the fourth Wednesday of the month, which intersects Thanksgiving and intersects Christmas time.
Yep, that's why I wrote the next two, because we usually combine our November and December, so we'll probably have two more planning commission meetings before the end of the year. I've given applicants heads up that, for people that are calling and potentially going to be applying for that November-December timeframe. So I think we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss. I didn't put it on this agenda, and this is a special call meeting, so we can't add it. And we typically do it at the October meeting anyway, so. Is there any more questions for me on that? All right.
We closed the public meeting, so the next order of business is the advisory committee meeting.
We did not meet this month. I will be calling them to meet in the next few weeks, but.
Anything else from the budget committee?
Budget committee didn't, Eva, do you have the update on our audit status?
I sent all the information to the auditor, and I have not heard back from them, so I will reach out to see where we're at with that. I think I had to sign and send some things out, that they've got to send letters out to the bank and, you know, all kinds of people, and so they usually wait to get that information back. I think that's been a few weeks since that's happened, so I would anticipate movement on it soon.
I think they set an October 15th deadline for returning some of that external information, so it might be a little while yet.
So I might check in after October 15th, then.
No, I don't think personnel committee didn't meet, did it?
Nope.
Is there any other new business?
I do not have any.
Any announcements?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to adjourn then? Do we have a second? All in favor? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.